There's always a lot of discussion about how well or how badly our schools fare in international competition, and obviously there are some differences particularly with those schools. We're most often compared with a lot of the Asian schools. And some of the differences are that of course the Asian schools are national systems, not state systems or the 15,000 local systems. Our classroom days are 180 compared to 200 to 240. Most of those schools track students and have a barrier exam at the sixth grade and move people into different directions, not by choice. And there are essentially no extracurricular activities in those schools. So which if any of those policies would you advocate if we wanted to compete internationally?
Okay. Well, we have a fairly established system in our country of our kids going to school 180 days on a fairly fixed day. The school systems you're talking about, the Asian schools, yes, they tend to fare very well on these tests. But at the same time, I've read a lot of things and seen a lot of stories about how our kids get much more of a whole education. It's not just again about testing, it's about the whole person. And the fact that, you know, we're still the most productive country in the world. Our kids come out knowing how to do more than just take tests and do specific tasks. They are creative, they are innovative, and we're still leading that. And so I think, you know, I don't know that we need to drastically change our model. I don't think our schools are broken. I'm not saying they're perfect, they always need improving, but I think we have a pretty solid model here that has, you know, has stood up for many years.
Barbara?
In 2013, a great book came out by Amanda Ripley, The Smartest Kids in the World and How They Got That Way. And she did a lot of wonderful research. She's also written some smaller works for magazines like The Atlantic in 2010, I think it was. But what she's determined after interviewing students who had gone abroad and spent a year abroad at school, and kids from abroad who'd come here and spent some time here, was that we simply do not focus enough on rigor. She said some countries have gone overboard, South Korea is one of them, and they need to pull back and they are pulling back a little bit. But she said that she really thinks that overall that's actually better than our system where we just don't focus enough on rigor. And I think she's right. And I love the sports, I love the band, my kids loved all those things, and they want to go to school to do those things, but we do have to focus on rigor. And I think as a nation, we have to think about that. I mean, when we really want to have the highest standards and have the highest expectations, I think we'll move forward.
This question from the audience. What are your views on pre-K education for all county students?
Well, we currently have 180 students in our pre-K program, but a report just came out, an evaluation just came out this last March, or yes, it was March 2015. And this was the first long-term look at our Virginia initiative. It's been around for about 20 years. And unfortunately, just as in other pre-K programs, when they are analyzing how well they're working, there's a fade-out. This one looked at kids at eighth grade level for literacy, because that's what you're really trying to accomplish with the pre-K kids, is to get them up with literacy. And so there was a fade-out, eighth grade literacy, there was no difference. They did find an improvement in kids moving through the system on time, not being held back. But really, most of the research now is saying that rather than putting kids into classroom situations so early and trying to push academics down earlier, it's all about talking with them, it's about reading to them, spending time with them, not an organized program.
Having a next-door neighbor that's a kindergarten teacher in Montgomery County Public Schools, I hear a lot about how kids are coming into kindergarten not prepared, not necessarily always academically, but also socially and emotionally. And overall, one of the things that they've shown about pre-K is that yes, the kids tend to level out eventually. That's the goal, to make sure they're at level, not that they're way behind. But also, in the long term, a lot of those kids turn out to be a lot more successful later in life in terms of getting a job, being stable, fitting in better socially, and just overall better people, better person because of that experience. So I think there's a lot more than just keeping them on par academically. Again, it's educating the whole child.
One of the issues that has occupied a lot of everybody's time on the board is the early start time or the shifts in time. Given that every child in Alaska and Canada and many of the tier of states in the north both start and come home from school in the dark and cold, what's really the issue that's underlying this?
This is something I've talked about a lot, and I do support the current start time change. Having watched my own children go through this and watching kids where I work at Blacksburg High School go through this, we deserve to give them a chance to get enough sleep. The way our system is set up right now, they absolutely physically cannot, and there's a lot of research to support that. On top of that, those kids are currently, many of them, getting on the bus before seven o'clock. With the schedule they have laid out, our elementary kids will not be getting on the bus before seven. And this is the time of the year when the sun is the lowest because we're about to go through the time change. And it's still not pitch dark out there. And as soon as the time changes, it will be better. But in particular, I think we need to do this because we have to do something for our older kids. That doesn't mean we aren't going to tweak this, adjust it, try to make it better, help people try to address the daycare issues, but we have to start somewhere.
Barbara?
Well, fundamentally, I think it's about listening to the parents. And I don't know why, but a lot of parents just didn't hear about this vote. There was a close vote, four to three, in April. And afterwards, a lot of parents came out. I was at the meetings and they spoke and they talked about, you know, just what this was going to do to their family's schedule. And so I listened to them, and there were questions also about were the bus schedules really going to work, because these had been developed through models, computer models, and they didn't really think they were realistic that they would work. So they had a lot of good concerns, I thought. And thinking back on it, you know, when they did the surveys, the parents were split, actually more were against the time change than were for it. So I really think that, quite frankly, to me, this wasn't a big issue. I mean, I read a lot of, you know, Heckingale Report, Education Week, a lot of different Education Next, a lot of different things. And this is not the big push for improving academically. So I would listen to the parents and I would vote to rescind this in January.
Can I rebut this one?
Sure.
I would just like to say that this is not just about academics, it's about a lot of things. In particular, it's about health and safety and the fact that, for example, we have teenagers driving in the morning as well. So I would counter that with there are a lot of other good reasons why we do need to do this and why we do need to look at that. And I would also point out that we spend as much time doing this start time change as we spend on redistricting and as we are spending currently now on hiring our superintendent.
I would just like to say that after this occurred, the parents were so upset, and I was listening to them, I went home and did a little research. Fairfax County, for example, they worked with this issue for 10 years. And I found out that it's really an issue that really gets a lot of parents agitated because you're talking about their home life. And so I think we did go too fast to have started at the end of last summer and to have a vote in April.
Thank you. Several budget issues have come in. This question is, our current operational budget is approximately 7% below the 208, 209. Actually, as I looked at the numbers today, the difference between 2009, 2014 is basically about three and a half million dollars or four million dollars. During that time, the state contribution over the five-year period has dropped by 8.1 million dollars. Local contribution has increased by 5.6 million dollars. Bottom line being that educating 150 more kids is being accomplished now with three and a half million dollars less. And actually, cost per pupil is down by 400 something dollars. So what, as a school board member, and as a school board, what should we be doing to help restore that funding?
Actually, your figures are different from mine. I got my figures from the budget, the Board of Supervisors, and actually, we did have a high point of 97 million in fiscal year '09, but our current budget is 100.5 million. We did have two years in which we had cutbacks. Those two years were 2010 and 2011. But for the last five years, we've had increases, and for the last five, the increases have been greater than the inflation rate. So actually, we are well above that high point that we had previously because the county has stepped up. Craig Meadows, our administrator, said that during the last decade, funding has gone up 12 million dollars. So we have had a cutback from the state, but the county has stepped forward. And in fact, this budget we have this year is a 3.56% increase over last year's budget.
Well, I actually do agree with Barbara's numbers, but I would like to point out that taking into account inflation, this year's budget compared to 2008, 2009 should actually be, depending on whose calculator you use, somewhere between 107 and 115 million. And that's, as Dr. Warner said, an additional 140, 150 students. So clearly, we're losing there somewhere. Fortunately, right now, the governor has promised to make K through 12 a high-grade budget priority, and I think that is the source we need to look at primarily for restoring funding. Obviously, selling properties, Old Blacksburg Middle School, Old Blacksburg High School are going to help, but I think a lot of that's going to go straight to debt service. And we have a lot facing us when it comes to capital projects, too. So it's going to take a lot of sources, including growth revenue, which I think we're going to see, given the growth that's coming to Virginia Tech. But we also have to provide services to those students that are going to come with that growth, meaning the children of the professors and the employees that come with that growth. So we've got a lot to look at there.
Can I have a little rebuttal here? I have the figures, I checked out the fall membership from the Virginia Department of Education, and in '08, '09, our membership was 9,549. This year, it's actually 9,515. So there's actually been a decrease from the '08, '09 year.
I've always, you know, what they say about, what they say about numbers, I guess, my data came from the state superintendent's report, and my numbers are just the opposite of theirs. So rather than flippant about that, since they agree and I don't agree...
I'll stay out of it.
I think what we can agree on is that the county, over the past five years, certainly, at least looking at my database, has really stepped up. In the meantime, the state has really not stepped up. And my question is, what kinds of things might we be doing as a school board to encourage our legislators who always put education as their top priority on notice that we want them to walk the talk?
Well, I sort of started that, explaining that, yes, it does have to come back from the state, there's no question about that. The state is projecting a surplus. And if the governor holds true and the legislature follows through, we should expect more money. A lot of things that people have also asked about doing is redoing the magic formula that no one seems to understand as to how they determine what localities get money. I've heard different things about whether that would hurt Montgomery County or help them. So it's hard to say if that's really something we would do. In terms of local taxes, I think it's really more important that we look at preparing for the future in terms of all the capital projects we have coming. I think we will get growth revenue to help with our operating budget, but we also need to be planning for capital as well. We have a lot of things sitting in front of us, especially in Christiansburg. And right now, the county's putting aside two cents. We may need to do more than that.
You know, I'm really surprised that the governor's projecting that we're going to have excess funds because last year, we had absolutely no growth in Virginia in 2014. And also, looking at some of these economic surveys, Forbes has had one of them out, you know, we're dropping unfortunately. Virginia has been dropping as far as, you know, how we're doing economically. I mean, I'm sorry to say that, it's a sad thing that Virginia was hit so hard by the downturn, the economic downturn. And that's a tough thing. But talking about the recalculation of how much we get from the state, that did happen a couple of years ago, and we got a little less. Well, the reason is because that's the, they want to be equitable, the state does. And so if you have a county that's doing a little better economically than another county, when they do the recalculation, you're going to get a little less. And that's one of the things that did hit us. So good thing Montgomery County's doing a little better comparatively, but it did bring in a little less money.
Yeah, and I think frankly Fairfax got a little bit poorer, so Fairfax ended getting up, getting more money than they had in the past. Speaking of equity, if you look at cost per pupil figures across the state, and this really has to do with state policy as much as, more than local policy at the moment, in Falls Church, the cost per pupil is over 17,000 dollars a student. In Norton, it's 9,000 a student. That represents essentially a $150,000 difference per classroom in those two schools. Do you believe that we need to encourage the state to rethink its distribution of resources?
Well, I mean, again, I've talked to some of our local legislators, and they say that it's probably not a good idea to mix this thing, again, just like Connie alluded to, because we're coming out probably better than we would if we did go through something like that. So I mean, we're focusing a lot on money here anyway tonight, and really, it's not so much how much money you have lots of times as how you're spending it. I mean, North Carolina, if you want to compare us to North Carolina, their average pupil, per pupil is $2,000 less than what we, our expenses are per pupil here in Virginia. So I think a lot of times, we focus on the money part of it, and instead, we need to be focusing on how we spend our, spending more time focusing on how we spend our money so that we're really being efficient and doing the best job we can with the dollars that we have to meet the goals that we have set.
And as I indicated, I agree with Barbara, you know, recalculating the formula is probably not the way to go. Lobbying our legislators to give us more money is probably a wonderful way to go. In terms of how we spend it, we do differ on where we think some of that should go. I've watched class sizes rise over the last few years, I've seen teachers burn out, I've seen teachers who haven't had raises in as much as seven years. So yeah, I do think we need to look at that. Obviously, $17,000 per pupil would be awesome, we're not going to see that anytime soon. But I do think we need to add some back because we have a lot of needs to address. And, you know, we've managed to hold it together over the last six years, do well in our test scores, but we've done it at the expense, in particular, of burning out our teachers.
All right, moving to the question of equity within county schools or across county schools, how should the school board make sure that opportunities for all students are equitable across the district?
Well, this is kind of an interesting question because a big part of the inequity right now is in facilities. I was on the building committee of Blacksburg High School, so I know what went in that school. It's been criticized for its beauty. No one would call Blacksburg High School beautiful, but it is functional, it's very functional, and it has a lot of the state-of-the-art technology. And we do need to have that in all of our schools. The other problem you see is oftentimes the smaller schools versus the larger schools, especially in high schools. So you have fewer opportunities in terms of course offerings. We've tried to make that up by allowing students to either take courses at other schools or through Virtual Virginia. I don't always favor virtual classes. One of the ways that I have worked to fix this inequity is through the Montgomery County Educational Foundation. For example, we gave a grant to Falling Branch Elementary to build a climbing wall, something that a lot of the schools have that they didn't have. So that's one good way, small way, you can give back and try to make it equitable.
Quite frankly, if I had my way, I would just like to see the money follow the child to the school. I think that would be, and of course, you'd have to adjust, like special needs kids would require more funding than other kids, but I would love to see that and would help us to decentralize as well. You know, it would put more responsibility with the principal, here's how much money you have based on the population of your school, you know, and let them have more responsibility in how they're setting up things, their programs, and how they're spending money. So if it were up to me, that's what I would do as far as equity goes. And I think we do have a problem. I remember Eastern Montgomery High, for example, couldn't even be part of the U.S. News and World Report, couldn't even evaluate them because they had so few AP courses that are offered there. So that is a real problem. And I've also read that we have our rural kids, many more of them are getting a standard diploma rather than an advanced diploma. The reason being, they're not having access to these classes. So that is a real concern.
Assuming that there were, there was external funding that provided for a program in each of the Montgomery County schools, let's make it the elementary schools, a super science program. It was in place for three years, the funding dries up. Now, X elementary school, we don't have any gated communities, but if we did, PTA comes to the board and says, here's a check for $100,000, we want to run that program in our schools. As a board member, how would you deal with that?
You know, I actually see that all the time. Grants are brought forward before the board, and usually, they are just going to certain schools. Oftentimes, it's not something that will affect all the children. And I think we have brought in something like 12 million dollars in grants, and I don't really, in fact, I've not even seen them making an attempt to make sure that that's equitably distributed. So I mean, that's a good question, but already that's happening. I mean, you already have that with the system we have in place, with the grants that are coming in, they're not affecting all the students equally.
I have to agree with Barbara on that as well. It does happen, I've actually experienced that when I was with the KIPS PTA. We had a program that was funded by a grant called Parents as Educational Partners or PEP. And after the first year when it ran out, we picked it up strictly as parent volunteers and ran, I actually ran that program for several years, building upon it and trying to provide this after-school education and opportunity for kids. But it, that is how it happens a lot of times. Again, I would bring up something like the Educational Foundation, that's a tool I have used to try to bring grants to teachers. They apply to us, we apply on their behalf, and a lot of our teachers have become excellent grant writers as a result of that. More and more, I think, we're seeing teachers going out and getting their own funding. But the county could certainly help that by providing those grant writing resources. We do have a grant writer full-time, but it certainly would be wonderful if she could have some assistance and we could do more of that.
So you're in agreement that it's all right for there to be unequal opportunities from school to school?
I guess what I was saying was that is already the situation right now, and I've not actually heard any discussion about moving beyond that with the current board. It's really not something that's come up, it's a good question.
Yeah, I don't know that we agree it's a good thing, we just agree that it's happening.
Well, and you understand that booster clubs play a big role in our schools, and if indeed band is an appropriate activity to be carried out in our schools, and the booster club at one school can raise money for new uniforms, but not so at another school, that's all right?
No, I think what we're saying is we do want to address it. One of my solutions was more grant writing, but you know, it's one of those things that's come from the budget cuts, a lot of those things have been cut.
I just wouldn't see myself as trying to micromanage that. I would probably encourage the other booster clubs to get on the ball and, you know, raise some money.
Okay. Talk a little bit about testing. Accountability is a hot topic, obviously. Currently, Virginia requires 29 SOL tests from grades three to 11. Many say this is too many, as a matter of fact, I think both the state superintendent and even the president has weighed in on that. Mark Tucker, in his 2014 book called Fixing Our National Accountability System, has proposed three high-stakes tests between grades three and 11. Where do you come down on the amount of testing that we do and where should we be on that? Are you up?
I think, I am a supporter of standardized testing reform. I do think we give too many tests. And it's not just that we give too many tests, but too many of those tests are not, do not provide valuable feedback. I actually brought an article with me from Scientific American talking about the fact that those types of tests do not necessarily encourage learning, that you need other type of testing. One grant that the Educational Foundation gave to Blacksburg High School was for eye clickers. This is a tool where the teacher can ask questions in the classroom and get immediate feedback from the kids on how they understood that concept. And so the teacher knows right away, is this something we need to continue working on or is this something we can move on and go to the next concept? That's the type of feedback and valuable learning I think we need to be doing instead of some of the standardized testing. And we need to put it in the hands of, back into the hands of the teachers to do that.
Well, I took a look, and you can go online and look at our testing schedule, I have it right here, and this orange line here, these are our SOL tests. Actually, there are 16 other standardized tests that are given to elementary school kids during the course of the year. Well, why do they do that? Because they want to keep up with the kids and make sure they're progressing and make sure they're online to take their SOL tests. So obviously, our schools must think that they're of value, these extra standardized tests. They're of value, again, in getting the kids ready to take the SOL test. And that's the whole point of it, really, is we're setting standards and we're trying to ensure that kids, you know, reach those standards. So for me, you know, I think this is a good thing. We have, for example, benchmark testing, we pay extra, we pay around $50,000 a year to do the benchmark testing because they think it's so valuable. What I would like to see is instead of just single high-stakes tests, actually more tests. Why don't we do an average of some of these other standardized tests?
Can I rebut?
Sure.
I would just like to say, I think it's more our legislators, and that trickles down to our administrators, who think these tests are so valuable. I'm not sure that parents, teachers necessarily agree with that.
And I would just like to say that I remember the days before the standardized tests. I was busting to an inner-city school in Charlotte, North Carolina, and I was in classrooms with kids, eighth and grade, eighth and ninth graders who could not read, and nobody knew. They did not know. And that, you can't solve a problem unless you know it exists.
Name three strengths of the Montgomery County school system.
Well, I would start out with band. I mean, I was with the band program for quite some time, I loved it, I was secretary of the boosters for a while, for a couple of years. And I would say that's a tremendous asset. I mean, the community loves it, they love to see the band in the parades and all, and some of the different events. So I would say that music in general, my kids did band, they can't sing, but just music in general is wonderful. Some of these enrichment programs, my kids both swam, the athletics, that's wonderful. And I'll tell you, we do have some excellent teachers out there. The late Terry Helms was just such an excellent teacher, and it was such a loss when she died prematurely, but we have some wonderful, wonderful teachers out there. So I would say there's some great programs and some excellent teachers out there.
I'd probably use the real estate analogy of location, 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 I would say teachers, teachers, teachers. They're without a doubt our greatest resource and the one that I think we've taken for granted the most lately. But I would add to that, we are fortunate in Montgomery County, we have strong extracurriculars, in particular, performing arts, athletics, our schools do wonderfully well in those. And I think we're also fortunate that we have very engaged parents, and that brings about engaged students. And I've seen that in a lot of our kids coming out of here, just their character is much better because they do have a strong parent base. But not every child does. So because of that, you know, I think sometimes we have to, we have to deal with those situations. And that usually falls back on our teachers.
I need a consultation with my two people here. I have a, I have a question that says, what will be your priorities for spending the revenue that will result from the eventual sale of the Blacksburg Middle School, High School properties? It's my understanding, school board's not going to get that revenue, it's in the hand of the county?
Yeah, it's already mandated to pay down there.
It's been passed over to the Board of Supervisors, signed off.
Well, this is, this is almost a micromanaging one, but children in the kindergarten and first grade are not taught to write the Palmer method, but are taught to print. How do we feel about this? How do we feel about this?
My turn. I don't remember who you have.
Oh.
It's cursive.
Cursive or non-cursive?
Yeah, no, we're trying to figure who's supposed to go next. The one I'm actually familiar with is Denelian, which is another form of sort of semi-cursive printing, which my daughter actually went through one year and I liked because it encouraged, it sort of got you halfway there. The fact is, we don't really do handwriting at all anymore. We all do this, of course, and our kids are experts at that. And there's a lot of concern about screen time and use of technology. We, of course, put the tablet program into the high schools this year, or last year. We have ninth grader and 10th graders now that have tablets 24/7 that they can take home. And there's a lot of concern about this much technology and this much screen time. Handwriting develops fine motor skills, and that can lead to a lot of creativity and brain development. And so I'm actually concerned that we are losing those types of skills.
Right. I'm a big one for teaching kind of the basics. And I can remember when I was a kid, they showed me exactly how to turn that paper and exactly how to hold the pencil. And one of my gripes when my kids were in kindergarten and first grade was that they didn't show them how to properly hold the pencil. You know, I said, are you going to take them out there when they're playing ball and not show them how to hold the bat? You know, we need to do that. So I think it's important, and I think we have lost, lost that skill, and it's good for the kids. I mean, it's still a big deal in some countries like France, and it is thought it does help with, with the brain development. And it's also just the fine motor skills. I mean, I had trouble with my kids. They still write like chicken scratch, you know. But I really think that it's something that we do need to recapture. It's a part of the traditional curriculum that we let get away from us, and I'd like to see us go back to it.
Another one of the hot-button issues over the last several months, I guess, has been the, the flag issue. And rather than ask you to confront that directly, which you may wish, may wish to do, the question I would raise is, what decisions should be centralized? What kinds of decisions should be centralized? And what decisions should be left to the school? In other words, it's that balancing between centralized versus site-based management? And I guess...
Well, this whole debacle that has arisen, you know, I think it's a shame because there had really been no disruptions at Christiansburg High School. According to the paper, and I just go by what I've read in the paper and what I've seen at the school board meetings, there have been no disruptions since the year 2000, 2001. So I think it's really a shame that, quite frankly, that this, that this came up because I think it's going to open us up for a possible lawsuit. Because really, you've got to balance First Amendment with, with, with safety and the environment. And I don't think we have anything to stand on here. Again, we had, we didn't have disruptions for all these years, and suddenly the principal decided to expand and go beyond the dress code and go to the decals on the cars. So I really think that was, was a mistake. And so I kind of think maybe we do need some centralized talk and rules about this.
I'll try to address both of those. I do support at least the ban on the dress, I mean, what's inside the school, clearly. And whether that can be extended to the parking lot, I think is going to end up possibly being a legal issue that may be beyond what we can answer tonight. But in terms of just the, the site base or what I often hear called autonomy for schools, this is something I've dealt with, working with the PTSO. This past year, when Blacksburg High School went to a block schedule, an AV block schedule while our other three high schools were on a four-by-four block schedule, one of the things we requested was to have students be allowed to take a study hall because not all kids are cut out to take seven classes or eight classes at one time. And prior to that, they'd had the option of taking seven or eight. That should have been a site-based autonomous decision made at the level of Blacksburg High School, and it was shot down by the superintendent. And that's the type of decision that should be made, I think, at the school level.
Please elaborate on your position as it relates to charter schools.
I don't think we need charter schools in Montgomery County public schools. I think we have excellent schools. They don't need an intervention. They need an investment. So I'm not in favor of charter schools or any sort of vouchers or tax credits for private schools.
Well, charter schools have been wildly successful in some areas. One area is Mooresville, North Carolina. Another area is New York City. Those success academies up there have just done a wonderful job. And so they've worked sort of as laboratories to show new ideas and new directions. And as I said, some of them have been very successful. Now, some of them have not worked out very well. But the good thing about a charter school is you can shut it down, and that has happened. So actually, I'm very much in favor of charter schools, and North Carolina has 160 charter schools at this point. They've got applications in for 25 more at this point. I think we have eight now. And so as far as charter schools go, I'd like to see it easier to open up a charter school here right now. What's holding back charter schools is the fact that you have to get approval by the school board. And so I would like to see that changed, so there's a different process for doing that. Because I really think we have seen some wonderful successes. Basis schools out in Arizona, top in the whole country right now. Those are charter schools.
Do you think there is a morale issue in the school system? If so, what will you do to address this as a board member?
Well, I do know we have a problem with attendance. I didn't realize we had such a significant problem with attendance. So thinking of students right now, I was sort of surprised that 27% of the population is missing a lot of class time, school time. And actually, 10% is missing so much that they're not going to pass their grade. I mean, it's really, I didn't realize what a problem it had become. And so I think, I don't know if it's a boredom issue or whether it's a morale issue, but it's something that the school board's working on right now, and we really do need to work on that. They're trying to work on engagement. Actually, I think these tablets are a means of getting the kids more engaged in the classroom and interacting with each other and with the teacher, and also having time to go out and work on their own. But, well, I just had time to do the student part of it, but...
Okay, so generally, when I hear morale, I think of teachers. And having spent nearly 15 years in the schools, active in the schools, working with these teachers, I think that's a huge issue right now. It is very low. Teacher morale is very low. And it's not just because of the pay. That is a big part of it. There's no question about that. The salary freezes that have, they have suffered the last seven years for some of them has really done a lot. But teachers don't teach just for pay. That's pretty clear. They also, they're professionals, and they want to be respected and treated as professionals. And with a lot of the programs they've implemented, where someone stands at the back of their classroom with a red card or a green card and holds it up if they don't have the students engaged for at least 30 seconds, is just degrading to teachers. And I think we have allowed that to take over too much of our curriculum. And I think it's time we gave it back to the teachers and treated them as the professionals they are.
I would just like to say that I think a great thing to do would, to be create a career ladder for teachers so they can move up and be, you know, recognized for additional responsibilities, for increased expertise. Like a master teacher, for example, would be a great category to have. And so I think that would really help morale of teachers, to have a means of moving up a career ladder and being recognized for their contributions.
And I would just add to that, they actually did institute something like that just this year at the high school level with, they took the department head position and made it more of a lead teacher position to do exactly that. So that is one step, for sure. But I think we need a lot more than that.
Very recently, the JARC, which is the Legislative Audit and Review Committee of the General Assembly, reported that nearly 40% of school-aged children in Virginia live in poverty. That's compared with 20%, I think, in other industrialized countries. How does this, or how should this impact the role of the school, of the school?
Well, fighting poverty, I think, is the number-one barrier to education right now. And education is the best way to get out of poverty. So you have that sort of, you know, catch-22 there. We have programs, for example, we feed kids for free on the Free and Reduced Lunch Program. We have pre-K for kids, for acro's kids and low-income kids. But I think we need to expand those types of programs. Obviously, there's only so much you can do in the school system. It takes a whole society to fix a problem like that. But there are things like that that we are already doing that we should expand on as well. You know, sometimes it's after-school programs you need because kids are going home, they're latchkey kids, if we could expand something there. But I think it's clearly one of the barriers to education and one of the things we have to address as a society.
Well, the success academies I mentioned earlier in New York City have found that a longer school day and enrichment programs have really helped those kids. Those kids in the success academies come from, lots of them are from low-income families, but they've soared. They've really done well. So that has worked up there. Another thing is, again, of the focus on teacher. Eric Heneschuk has done a lot of research on this, and he says that we can, that gap that we have between the poor and the richer kids, that if a kid will have a really excellent, a really good teacher for three years in a row, that you can overcome that gap. So I would say that there are some things out there that are working, enrichment programs, expanding the length of the day, and then focusing on the teachers and making sure we get really good teachers with those kids who have a gap problem.
And I would just add to that, in order to attract those teachers, we're going to have to pay them better and treat them better.
The Montgomery County School Board has indicated that it would like to name a new superintendent sometime in the next two weeks. Conceivably, four of the seven sitting board members might not be in place when that person takes office. What's your view on this process?
Okay, well, I think it would be a mistake to name, the schedule right now shows for naming the new superintendent in mid-November. And if we do have, we know we're going to have at least two new faces on the school board. And so I really think that we need to go ahead and, I think they should delay the decision. And quite frankly, we already have an interim superintendent on board. We're not going to have somebody just leave where they are right now and rush here and come here in January or February. So I would like to see the whole thing slowed down a little bit and see what happens after these elections.
And I actually agree with Barbara on that one. I think with this many seats up, it's something that possibly should have been considered. They could have started the process in terms of hiring the consultant, doing some of the profile, that type of things, putting out the request for applications. But I think honestly, it would have been more appropriate to delay the decision when the new board was seated. I understand there's also some time constraints for them legally about having an interim for a certain amount of time, but if it could have been, I think it would have been better to have delayed it.
Well, in that vein, what, what characteristics would you like to see in a new superintendent?
Well, I went to three of the superintendent search forums and heard a lot of the same things. Number one is, the word they like to use is transparency, but it really is an important thing. I think we, I think people want to see more budget transparency. They want to see more transparency in the decision-making, both from the superintendent and the school board. I know people want to see a superintendent that leads by example and works with the schools, not dictates to them. That's something I keep hearing over and over and over, is there was too much mandating and not enough of working with the schools. And, you know, that brings back the autonomy. It also brings back the uniqueness in our strands and the fact that we have different types of populations and we need to address those things. Obviously, budgeting, good budgeting skills is something that we have to have, and that's been an area that's been a big concern. We've had these large carryovers the last couple of years, and the question you ask yourself is, was that savings or was that creative budgeting? So that's an area where I think we've heard a lot about that we need to improve.
Dr. Mark Edwards was the Superintendent of the Year in 2013. He moved into the Mooresville schools in North Carolina, and he just had a real passion. He had courage. He really shook up the status quo. He had vision. He really worked with the community, including higher education. He worked with the families. He worked in the schools. So he brought people together, and he actually changed the whole instructional model. They actually brought in laptops, and they did go to what's called a blended environment, where part of the time is traditional-type school, face-to-face, the same sort of thing we have, you know, we've traditionally done. But mixing that with the technology, enabling kids to work at their own pace. If they need remediation, they can do that. If they want to go ahead, they can do that. So I would say that he exemplifies what we would, I would like to see. Someone who has courage, someone who's willing to go beyond the status quo, but someone who has the passion and the communication skills to bring people together.
The, usually superintendents and board members say that neither of them like surprises. As a board member, how would you define a surprise?
You go ahead. Wow, that's a bit of a surprise.
Let, let me provide a little more, a little more construct. Some people would say a surprise is, in Fairfax County, for example, a board member might say, a surprise is, I don't want to see that there were seven hazmat trucks in front of George Washington High School on the news before I heard about it from the superintendent. And so, given that context, you know, in Bath County, it might be, I don't want to hear from the neighbor that the coach put my kid up against the locker. That might be a surprise, you know. So what would be a surprise? What is the kind of thing you would like to know about as communication issue from your superintendent before you hear it from a neighbor on the news or on the street?
Well, I kind of, well, first off, I, to get serious here, a surprise was, of course, the collapse of the gym at Blacksburg High School. We don't need any more surprises like that. And I would point to the need for maintenance. We have just not budgeted properly for maintenance. A couple of years ago, we had a company come in, Cardnotec. They went to every single building that we have in our school system, and they identified $11 million in deficiency maintenance. And they also said that we need to be doing a better job of ongoing maintenance. And they identified a whole lot of maintenance issues that will be coming up as our schools age, and they're going to need to have, the components and systems are going to have to be upgraded. So I'd say that's the kind of surprise we don't want. And unfortunately, unless we get better at dealing with maintenance, we may have another surprise. I hope not on the scale of what we had at Blacksburg High School.
I'm pretty sure the Confederate flag issue was a bit of a surprise for some school board members, in particular that the policy had been changed and that it, that this had gone to the newspaper. So that's definitely the kind of surprise that should be communicated immediately to school board members before they see it on Facebook or find it in the newspaper or somebody emails it to them with a link.
And of course, given cell phone technology, that's harder and harder to do. The, I have, I have one more question. Actually, I have a lot of questions here that, ranging from delineating responsibility between school board members and the superintendent. The last question I think I'll ask is that by state code, school board members are required to submit a budget to the Board of Supervisors that outlines and responds to the needs of the school district or the school division. Sometimes, boards of supervisors tell school boards how much money is available. Given those two positions, what would be your approach?
Okay, well, the process has been basically that the school board comes up with a budget. They send it to the board of supervisors. The board of supervisors send back a number that says, no, this is what you get. And I don't know that we can change that process necessarily because the budget planning is already started even now with our interim for next year. The school system has to keep looking at that. But I think better communication between the school board and the board of supervisors is the key to making that process smoother and to coming to an agreement at the end where either side doesn't feel slighted or left out of the process. I think that's what partly has been lacking in the past, is more, is better communication and working together between the two boards to deal. Because we've obviously had some very contentious budgets over the last six years, and it possibly could have gone smoother if there had been better communication. could have gone smoother if there had been better communication and more working together. You know, they have joint sessions once every quarter. Maybe during budget season, they should be more frequent.
Well, the board does submit what they call a needs-based budget, which they know, they already have an idea of how much money is going to be available, so they generally know, well, this budget's over $4 or $5 million more than what we're being led to believe will be available. So there is some communication there. But they go ahead and they file the needs, what they call their needs-based budget. And then, of course, it's all in the hands, the purse strings belong to the Board of Supervisors. And so they have to look at it and do evaluations. I mean, there are other things we're funding, too, you know, the sheriff, the Commonwealth's attorney, there are a lot of other important things out there. In fact, right now, at this point, with our county spending, 70% of our county spending goes to the schools. That only leaves 30% to those other programs. So we have to realize that we've got a big budget here, and we're already taking a large percentage of the spending that goes on in the county. So I think we need to be, I would think we need to be more realistic in putting together a budget.
And I would just like to rebut that. I just want to point out, because Mr. Tuck did this the other night, too, that 70% is a little inaccurate. That is not operating budget. That includes debt service. And it also includes the, like, $42 million that comes straight through the county from the state and from the federal government. So it's really not fair to characterize it as 70%. So I'd just like to clarify that, that the whole story within those numbers.
But it really is 70%. About 60% is operating budget, but we have school debt service. And we pay a little over $18 million per year in school debt service. We're also collecting, as Connie mentioned earlier, about $1.5 million of extra tax money to set aside for future building projects. So if you add it up, it actually is 70% of the spending. And yes, some of that money that we're spending comes from the Fed, some of it comes from the state, and some of it's, you know, contributions from the county through our taxes.
I want to thank you both for being so responsive. And to members of the audience, I know some of you wonder, well, why didn't my question get asked? You know, there are a lot of questions up here that range all the way from making accommodations to, in the schools, for lesbian, gay, and bisexual students, to whether you support tax credits for private schools, to how do we fire teachers that are incompetent, to views on closing elementary schools and consolidating those that are under-enrolled, to apprenticeship programs and more focus on vocational education and the way that we operate the special education program. So those are all really great questions, but unfortunately, we don't have time. So with that, I want to thank you both and invite you now to do your four-minute closing.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to participate this evening. I am running for a seat on the school board to give District F voters an alternative to the status quo. To stand against the status quo and press for true, meaningful accountability is difficult. But the purpose of an elected school board is to provide accountability to parents and taxpayers. Former Montgomery County School Superintendent Arnold Sari has endorsed me and written this about my efforts. Quote, "Seldom does a candidate have the courage to cite deficiencies that haunt every school system. All school organizations, including higher ed, need thorough analyses of their spending priorities. There must be a valid justification for spending in all budget categories. Bigger budgets are not always better. It is where and how the money is spent," end quote. This is exactly right. The point is not number of dollars spent. It's not the beauty and spaciousness of buildings. It's not sustaining pet programs. Instead, it's about the achievement of our students and putting them first. The school board must set high expectations for all students and must wisely spend taxpayer dollars to meet our academic goals. That's spending for results. That's efficiency. Unfortunately, a Center for American Progress School Efficiency Report in 2014 showed a low efficiency rating for Montgomery County compared to other Virginia districts. We must do better. Currently, 70% of our county's spending is dedicated to schools. Total education spending increased from $104 million to $121 million between 2011 and 2015. Unfortunately, we have struggled academically. For the last 10 years, Montgomery County math and English achievement scores have hovered around state averages. The 2015 district report card showed overall pass rates of 75% for math and 78% for English. In sum, I'm running to offer a focus on accountability in both academics and spending to benefit both students and parents. My family and I moved to Montgomery County in 2000, in 2004. Both my sons graduated from Blacksburg High School. I worked as a volunteer at BHS, mostly in the swim and band programs, but also in the library and with the German exchange program. I regularly review textbooks during textbook adoption cycles, and I offered comments. For over two years, I wrote regular columns on K-12 education for the News Messenger, as well as several commentaries on school board issues, which appeared in the Roanoke Times. I have attended and closely followed school board business for five years. For additional information, I have some of my campaign materials in the lobby, or you can check out my Facebook page, Barbara Skinner for School Board. And again, thank you for letting me speak tonight, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank Dr. Warren Jimsey and the League of Women Voters and everyone who came out tonight, especially given that it was a small panel. My name is Connie Fogarty. I'm also running for school board in District F. I live on Brush Mountain with my husband, Mark. I have two daughters that are in college, both of them BHS graduates. I'm a local girl, went to Patrick County High School and Radford University, so I'm very familiar with southwestern Virginia. I moved to Blacksburg permanently in 2000. I have over 14 years of experience as a parent, as an employee, as a volunteer, as an advocate, and as a strong supporter of public education. As my daughters went through, I went through with them. I was a parent volunteer on every PTA board where they went to school, eventually becoming president of the Blacksburg High School PTSO for two and a half years during the period when we were housed at Blacksburg Middle School. I've been on two principal search committees. I was the parent representative on the Blacksburg High School Building Committee. And I've spent almost four years now with the Montgomery County Educational Foundation, currently serving as treasurer, and I was past president for a year and a half. During those years, I've donated thousands of volunteer hours to our school system and helped raise over hundreds of thousands of dollars. I'm also an employee, currently the BHS AP testing coordinator. Prior to the gym collapse, I was a substitute teacher for many years. I've steadily fought for BHS and against the budget cuts. Five years attending school board meetings and speaking at them, as well as board of supervisors' meetings, and I've been a frequent advocate for public schools. I want to continue to be an advocate. I want to build upon my knowledge and experience that I've had in the school system, actively participating in it for the last nearly 15 years. I want to use the connections I've built with teachers and administrators to help them. I want to continue to serve our students and parents. I think that could best be done on the school board. The NCPS motto now is engage, encourage, and empower. You've also heard a lot tonight about efficiency and accountability. My question is, where's the human factor in that? We have to consider the whole child. We have to consider the teachers. We have to consider the parents. We've been through a really rough time the last six years, and it's had a huge effect on all of them, in particular, our teachers. We had a teacher leave Blacksburg High School this past year. He was a math teacher. He worked with the most at-risk kids. He didn't just leave BHS, he left teaching. He was burnt out, partly because we spend about a month every year just teaching those kids to those SOL tests. We set up boot camp in the student collaborative area, and we pull kids from classes that they should be in, in order so they can take those tests and pass them. And still, we have kids who can't graduate because they miss one or two questions on those SOL tests. I think our students and our teachers are more than test scores. I think it's time we brought back the human factor. I think the status quo is continuing all this testing. I think we need to change that. We need to look at what we're doing for our teachers and what we're doing for our students and how we engage our parents. Thank you.
Thank you both for being here, and thank you both for offering your time, your services for what sometimes, oftentimes, is a thankless sort of job. And we do appreciate it, and I think this audience appreciates it, too.